Okay, my recording is back on.
Yeah, we're flicking right now. Is the recording on?
It's on.
Okay. Let the record show that no decision was made in closed session. And we have a resolution in front of us. The resolution number is 03282302. We've all had an opportunity to review it to have a motion to approve the resolution.
Do you want some of the people to come in from the courthouse to understand?
Sure.
I'll just make a round. I mean, if that's okay with you.
Yep.
We'll wait on the resolution until they get in.
Good morning, everyone.
We're leaking for anybody else?
I think everybody's here.
Okay. You got everybody? Before we vote on the resolution, being we have people in here that it affects, we'd like to do the summary. Would you like to do the summary of what the resolution says?
The summary?
Yep.
Okay. Do you want me to read it? So basically, the resolution is adopting and implementing a wage scale. And the wage scale for, it affects any new employees hired on or after March 28th, 2023, and current employees. And it will take effect July 1st of 2023 for existing employees. Standalone longevity schedule for all full-time employees as follows. Five cents at five years, 10 cents at 10 years, 15 cents at 15 years, and 20 cents at 20 years. Scale one clerk and support staff in the recorder, treasurer, attorney, and auditor's office will start at $40,000. At six months, $45,000. At one year, $48,598.53. Scale two custodians, $22.50 an hour starting wage, $24 an hour at six months, and $25.98 at one year. Scale three clerks, driver's license department, starting $45,000, six months, $50,000, one year, $54,495.28. Which also means that anybody that currently has one of those titles and isn't at the one year will be moved up to the one year amount effective July 1st. Is that?
Yep. And longevity will be back in effect for the sheriff's office. Roger.
Do we know, or the reason why, I have two employees. Do I know where they're going to fall in this?
It does not affect them.
Does not affect them. Okay.
They have different job titles.
Okay. That's all I didn't know.
Any other questions?
So the raises we negotiated, does that go by the wayside?
It's in, it's in this amount. It was figured into this amount.
When you consider, I mean, when you consider clerical or whatever that is, do I, I mean, I'm the committee coordinator.
You're different. You do, this does not apply to you.
No other questions. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution number 3282302.
So moved.
Motion by Whacter, seconded by, I'll second it. Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. The resolution is in effect and it will take effect on July 1st. And Todd, we're up to you on opioid.
Yeah, the, uh, the, uh, resolution I sent to you this morning, I apologize for the laziness behind that, but it's, it's an essence resolution giving me the authority, much the same as what was given to me for the first opioid settlement agreement. To sign the paperwork necessary to agree to receive funds for the county for the second half of the lawsuits involving, um, Tiva Pharmaceutical, Allerton, Walden, Walmart, CVS, Health Corporation, and Pharmacy. So it basically provides that we will be receiving funds out of that settlement, litigation, class action lawsuits against those companies as part of a larger or broader settlement agreement with all the different states. So 50% will go to the state of Oz and 50% will be divided up among the counties. The importance behind it is that in order for the state to maximize the amount that is going to be received from these companies for this lawsuit, all of the counties have to be on it. So that's basically pretty much it. This one is a smaller amount. We've already got some checks in from the first one. The due date for this is April 18th. So the resolution just basically explains what it is. I also provide you a packet of information for your reading. But it just provides me the authority to sign those documents and indicate Kusud County's willingness to accept those proceeds.
The resolution?
I'd make motion to accept.
This is a resolution, Mr. Stecker. The number is 03282303. And Mr. Stecker makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Whacter. Any discussion on the resolution? Again, the resolution number is 03282303. Do a roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous.
Todd, can I get you a copy of this resolution?
Yeah, that's fine. Did you print it off?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Um, the, uh, the one thing, and we need to make sure for this one too, it's going to have to be separate from the first one, so it's going to have to be, can't be co-mangled with the, the funds for Kusud County. It has to be, 75% of it has to be spent for specific mitigation purposes.
Same, same rules as last time, but?
Same rules, just different town.
So we'll set up a second fund. How is Nick, how are we going to know the difference between the two? Like, because a lot of it's direct deposits, so how is Nick going to know?
Well, and what I will do when we start receiving this is identify this as proceeds from NOAT2, National Opioid Agent.
Okay.
We got what you're doing.
Anyway.
Yeah, I will, uh, abate my trust.
Okay. Okay. And then, um, will you submit this resolution or do you want me to? I know, like, Kristy Harshberger from Isaac has been emailing me.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you want me to?
No, I will, I will go on and sign it. That's the reason that they've been, they're waiting for the online signatures. So with that, I'll be able to sign. So I'll get online, sign this, yeah, this morning and start signing those. That should eliminate the need for them to continue to email me. Let's hope.
Yeah.
So since you approved it, I'll go ahead and do that. This could be a copy of it.
Yes, same level. Yeah.
And with that, gentlemen, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming, Todd. Appreciate it. Sure. We're going to take on, just taking a minute to break.
Um, no, go ahead and take your break. I can even talk to you to anyone.
Yes.
When sometime in the next five and a month, I'd like to do a training for the board and the department head on sunshine laws. I told the, um, the IPB that I would do that and I want to do that so I can kind of present some information for everyone. But, you know, it's not a time that's not busy.
Get some blood flow.
So that, because it'll probably be another.
We're done.
Yeah, you bet. Absolutely.
So, yeah. Is that weird?
All right.
Oh, where the early birds.
Just, uh, I need to get a hold of that Justin Stiles.
Brown shoes, for the first time ever. My first pair of nice brown shoes.
Just got them ready.
No, I went, there was $6 from Browns.
Really?
Because I had some gift cards that I had to use and, and stuff I've been saving for a couple of years and I just hadn't went to buy shoes. And I'm like, you know what? It'd be nice to have a decent pair of shoes.
What brand are they?
Uh, Four Simes or Four Shines or something like that.
Okay. Not a bad one.
I never heard of it either, but they look nice, so I thought.
Are they full-on leather or are they kind of like a pleather?
Uh, you mean the top somewhere?
Yeah.
I don't know. I guess I just thought they looked nice and they felt.
Yeah, they do. They do. I just, it's just when you get like the, because I know with like boots and stuff, when you get the, like, actual leather stuff, you have to treat them, otherwise they'll crack.
Oh, 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 no, I don't think these are, these aren't my, like, blue leather. No, no. Because, yeah, my boots, you gotta put a spray on them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah.
That's, that was my problem. I had boots for, that I wore for probably two and a half years and they started kind of, not really crumbling, but cracking and, and they're just, they just don't look nice anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
But that was because I'd never treated them.
Right.
I should play again about a while.
You got dudes or, or yours?
Skechers.
Oh, those are Skechers.
Oh, it probably locked me.
I think the electronic version of meeting today is going a little better than last time.
Yeah. That's good.
When are you coming back, Kyle?
I'll be back for the next meeting for sure. Um, still kind of flexible in between now and then. Don't have anything set in stone necessarily, but I'll be back for the next meeting.
Go golfing?
What's that?
Go golfing?
Not yet, but I still might.
Golf, Kyle?
I do a little bit, not a whole lot.
He can swi, he can swing the club at the ball, but?
Do you go?
I used to. I got a funny golf story. Um, so I was over with my, my, uh, brother-in-law. He had a couple of friends and his, one of his brothers and then I think his dad was there too. And I just tagged along because I had a set of golf clubs and, and I had played since high school. This was like four years after high school or something like that. So it was quite a while ago. We were all playing golf and I don't remember what hole it was. We were playing up in the golf course up in Grettinger. I smacked the ball and it was like a, on a dog leg left. Smacked the ball and landed the ball within like two feet of the hole off the tee. Like, oh, you're pretty good at this. And they said, do you believe this? This is only my second time golfing. My brother is like, you should not say that.
Because some of the guys are all dug and by the time he gets up here, we'll be done with the lieu of taxes on the regional housing authority. It's in our folder.
And I'll make a motion to approve the, um, pay. Hey, we are up to you. Thank you. Kyle, are you on?
Yep, I'm back.
Hey, we're doing lieu of taxes on Maplewood Apartments. Plath makes the motion. Carter seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Aye.
Enamis. Correct? Kyle?
Correct.
Thank you. I print it, they still couldn't read it.
Good. I'm trying to print nicely.
Oh.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Alright, yes. Um, first item, the, uh, resurfacing projects, they are in your electronic folder. We have three of them this year. A one-mile stretch of Pete twenty between McGregor and US eighteen, and then a Lots Creek Road, and then there's a three-mile, uh, a little bit over three miles of resurfacing south of Low Rock. Um, they were let in at the Department of Transportation last Tuesday. We have received the bids. The, uh, low bid was from Heartland Asphalt for three million, four hundred, four thousand, three hundred, fourteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. The engineer's estimate was three million, five hundred, eighty-three thousand, five hundred, forty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. So it's a little bit less than what, uh, what we had estimated. Uh, there is farm marketing, since it was led in through the DOT, uh, we are using electronic, uh, all electronic. Filing system for that. So this resolution would be to award the contract and then also, once all the required paperwork, uh, is returned to our office, allow me to, uh, sign that on behalf of Cassude County.
The resolution number would be oh-three, twenty-eight, twenty-three, oh-four. You have the resolution in front of you on your folder. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Motion by Flapp. Second by Carter. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, do a roll poll vote, please.
Flapp.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Whacker.
Yes.
Sucker.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous, and I will sign it.
Sticky.
Don't hurt yourself. Don't hurt yourself.
No, it wasn't to hurt me, it was gonna hurt somebody behind me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, construction in the road right where we do have, um, a few, uh, items there. Uh, the first one would be, uh, a request from Andrew and Amanda Louts and Legard Wind Power. They'd like to outlet a six-inch roof drain into the south right-of-way of one-seven-zero-two-four-sixtieth Street. Uh, this is the, this is a building that's being used to, that is being constructed and is being used to control the Legard Wind Farm project. Uh, they just wanted to get the, uh, roof drains and outlet them into the road ditch. Uh, we do have an agreement that does get, uh, recorded for this. Um, just, uh, we will allow them to outlet this into the road ditch. However, we will not necessarily ensure that it's going to drain. Um, will not be held, uh, responsible for any, uh, any problems for that way. We've had everything, um, returned to us signed and notarized correctly. This is something that we've done in the past. I would recommend that the board would approve of this, uh, application and request as well.
Hey, Roger and Doug, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I know we've allowed outletting into the road ditch on a few other occasions, but is there a reason that they cannot go straight to the drainage district ditch? It looks like it's fairly close and, um, the same owner.
I guess we did not ask for this then.
I, I was, uh, I was just, yeah, that was a curious question of mine too, being the drainage runs through the farm.
I suppose this was the simplest way to do it, probably.
Cost-effective for them.
Right, right. And it is not a big deal if it's... If they're accept the fact that it might not drain as good as if they had it hooked to a tile, I ha- I don't have an issue with it.
Right.
I would move to approve the permit for Mike Redding, uh, zero-three.
This is for Andrew Louts.
Yeah, Andrew, yeah, Louts.
Okay, I got the wrong one. Andrew Louts. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post. Motion carried unanimous.
I would, I would oppose it.
Okay. One opposed. Which one you have next? Hellman?
Just a second, I want to put my notes together. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, Hellman, uh, Tom Hellman, um, has requested, uh, to cross the road right-of-way, uh, three-hundred-fortieth Street. Uh, currently, there is a tile that crosses three-hundred-fortieth Street. However, a part of it is underneath of those trees there on the rate property. I think also there may be some private tile going in on the Goshi side that Hellman may be participating in. Uh, what, uh, Tom is requesting is that, that, um, crossing be moved so it would be more efficient, effective, wouldn't be claw- uh, get clogged up with the tree roots. He has provided all the necessary, uh, information to the road department. Uh, we would provide the material for this particular, uh, crossing as well as two-hundred-and-fifty dollars towards labor, and that's Cassude County's policy. And I would recommend that the board would approve of this, our request as well.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sucker makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Carter, second's the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
That for or against?
In support.
So that it was all, all eyes?
Yeah.
I get these two signed now, Roger. And this one is both Tammy and Andrew. And it needs to be notarized. I will notarize that.
Thank you.
And then I think there's one more. Uh, this is just for, uh, discussion purposes, but, uh, I think the gentleman's name is Mike Reddy. Uh, from the Claire Reddy Land in twenty-four of, that's Garfield Township. Uh, they would like to cross Sixtieth Avenue twice. Uh, they have been participating with freeers to get a tile name brought up to that road. Uh, and then also so they could drain, uh, their land there. Um, I, we've been out, looked at it. We do not have any concerns. However, we're waiting for some, uh, information to come back on the application. So, I guess I'm just, if the board would have concerns about that, if you could let me know if they would bring the stuff back. And prior to a board meeting, does the board have any concerns of me giving them a verbal, uh, a verbal permission to go ahead and cross that road?
It's all private tile.
It is all private.
Uh, I don't have a problem with it anyway.
Okay. Very good. That, uh, completes all the construction in the road right-of-way. As far as discussion, uh, the secondary road Dutch, uh, DOT budgeted program needs to be, uh, submitted by April fifteenth. I pretty much have the, uh, budgeted program, the DOT budgeted program completed. And I would like to present this either on the fourth or the eleventh of April. I'm just curious if you, this takes about an hour. I just wanna make sure there's not any other conflicts on those days.
The fourth, we have the, um, Max Tech levy hearing, but that takes about five minutes.
Right, okay.
So, um...
Is there any other drainage hearings or anything scheduled?
We have a teleconference with Winnebago County to consider, uh, updated reclassification. And that's, it says five minutes, but...
How about on the eleventh, do you think?
Of course, it does look like we have quite a few things. The one that is completely empty right now.
I'm gonna shoot for the eleventh on that there. So, I'll present that on the eleventh. Uh, construction projects right now, everything is still waiting for weather to, uh, to allow them, allow everybody to work. We still have open positions at the mechanic shop, two of them. Uh, road condition last week when I spoke to you, uh, spoke about the end of the week prior and the conditions of the gravel roads. Very happy to say that they improved greatly over that weekend. I went out that Tuesday afternoon and was able to, uh, drive a lot better on those gravel roads. Uh, we still are maintaining them, um, getting gravel hauled on them, getting them in shape. And back on wood, I hope that everything will, um, will continue to, uh, heal satisfactory. But I do wanna say publicly, thank you to the road department, all the operators, all the mechanics. My foreman, my assistant foreman, thank you very much for all the work that they, uh, had done in the last week and, uh, over the winter. Uh, I think everything went well, so thank you.
I had a couple of thank yous for gravel hauled and rock hauled. They appreciated the roads being fixed, so...
It takes a little bit of time, but we, I think our road crew did a wonderful job, so...
We had to drive on gravel yesterday.
Good.
I know going out to, to the Chambers Farm yesterday, Southwest to Corworth, I mean, that road was horrible last week, or in the last couple of weeks, and then yes, the last couple of days, it's been, it's been perfect. I mean, it's a great road, so yeah.
Good.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Doug.
Good. Uh, when we decide to do the budget amendment, I will be putting some things in there for the road department. Uh, no update on the letting of the airport expansion at this time. I know plans are out there. I, I don't even know what date it is. I might, I think I'll find out on there. Find out the date of letting. And then next week, I do have a meeting with, uh, UP, Union Pacific Railroad. They will be installing some safety signals at, I think it's three Cassude County intersections, so a couple of weeks, we'll know a little bit more about that. Planning and zoning, um, the commission is going to have a meeting on April third, which is next week, at three o'clock, uh, to discuss and, and get a report forwarded, get a report ready for, to be forwarded to board supervisors on the proposed ordinance. And then, um, working on the landfill post-closure report. Uh, Tammy, do you know anything? Is the audit for fiscal twenty-two, is that on the schedule or has it been filed yet?
She is just waiting for three attorney letters that she has not received back yet.
Okay.
I haven't talked to Todd about that, cause it was a while, so...
Okay.
That's all she's waiting.
When that gets filed, would you please let me know and then we'll be ready to give that post-closure report down. Other than that, that's all that I have.
Uh, Anton Bridge, a couple of people told me it's pretty rough. The one over at the slough by Anton's.
The very north end?
Yeah, Anton's Blacktop.
Yeah.
You might wanna put slow signs up or something. There's a pretty good bump there. The frost must have heaved one side.
Okay.
And the other one's a four-way bridge. I had a couple of complaints that it needs rocking in, but that's going to be...
I'm sure, but I, I'm sure Scott knows about it and we're taking care of it, but I will remind him of it.
Yeah.
I'll remind Bill too, cause he kinda takes care of that big six bridge or something.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They, they're, those are gonna take a lot of care now.
Uh, from last week, I guess, were we gonna go anywhere with the gentleman that was in for wanting rock?
He got it. It's all done. I, I drove over it the other day. It's great shape.
I drove it Tuesday afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah.
And very confident that
Okay.
Fifty-five miles an hour, it was a very safe car, I did check that.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up with that.
Yeah, I drove my seventy-nine Ford over at fifty-five miles an hour and, and it doesn't have tight steering.
Okay.
It was, it was better than Winnebago's side that he had talked about.
Alright, I just was wondering how that turned out.
No, I want to look, yeah.
Uh, J- just to be specific, Jay Mayland?
Correct. Yep.
Yes, I drove, I think that's three-hundred-ninetieth Street.
Yeah.
That afternoon.
Okay.
Um, we did get a picture of one of the school buses that went in the ditches, one of the ditches, that intersection.
Merrill Mueller sent us a picture of.
I guess I did not receive that.
Uh, there's a school bus that went in the ditch, uh, north.
Thursday morning.
How did you receive the photo?
By text message.
Via text message.
Would anyone feel...
If I was to forward to them.
Yeah, with somebody, I mean, I, I have no idea.
It was my understanding that you were aware of that too. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I do not know
Okay.
Uh, what you are talking about, so if you could please forward me the...
But that's not the issue, I don't think. It's just, I mean, it's...
The, the question, the question was made, you know, why don't we do sand at the intersections anymore?
Or it went in on the ice?
Uh, as far as I know, is it slid through the intersection and went into the ditch.
I don't, I don't know that it was in the intersection. I think it was, or, can we pull the picture back up? But I think just, I mean, that was just a generic question. Do we, do we sand? I think I asked you this before, but at some point, do we do use any sand on any of the roads at the moment currently or, or intersections or...
I, I think you're referring, you're referring to our snow ordinance.
Correct.
Snow removal ordinance.
Correct.
And we do, after an initial snow removal, we do sand some, not necessarily all rural roadway, but some, yes, in intersection scales and different things.
I got the picture pulled up here, but, um, it was not at an intersection, but it is on a blacktop.
Well, they're not gonna sand the whole blacktop.
No.
You can't, you can't do that in a county. We'd, we'd run out of sand so quick.
I was thinking it was at an intersection, so...
I, I did not receive that text message, and if somebody would, I'll, I'll, I'll reply to Merrill. I visited with Merrill before.
I just wanted to bring it up with the air, John, you know, it was brought to our attention. I, I'm sorry you didn't receive that too. I will make sure to forward that to you now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Doug? If not, thank you Doug, appreciate it.
Everybody have a good, good day.
You too.
We are going to switch hats and go into drainage, our favorite subject. We are up to appoint commissioners for DD4 lateral 28 reclassification. Did you have somebody in mind?
Yes, Tim Strucker and Rich Rosenmeyer.
Yep. Do I have a motion to appoint Tim Strucker and Rich Rosenmeyer?
I'll make that motion.
Kyle can have it.
Okay, Kyle, you second it?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint commissioners, is there any questions? Any comments? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stecker?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. We are up to discussion with Idells Kasoot County 20 amended for wetland projects. Marge?
Did you get a chance to?
No, I didn't. It was. Oh, I seen that. Now that I see the, the email, are the, yeah, I seen it.
They just want to add saturated waters to the wetland project that, everything else stays the same.
Yep.
The current one, Idells will reimburse brand new engineering for that.
Okay.
They just want to add that to that. So if you agree with all that, then they'll, they'll write it up and do a final draft and present us something if you want something else added or taken away.
There's no negativity to it, to the drainage districts, so I would suggest probably that we do it. Does anybody have any issues with it?
So I'll send a message back to Idells that it's okay and they'll, they'll send us a regular final draft.
We'll make a motion and okay. Or do you want the final draft?
It's just a review, so.
They, they put it back on the agenda, I guess, it's my.
Yes, to approve it.
Yeah, no, it's, to go ahead and let Marge, by unanimous consent of the board without a motion.
That's fine.
Yeah. Anything else? We are, requests. Marge, want to hand out, Mr. Stecker, if you want to hang on to him until he comes back, because I don't think anybody's going to do anything right away anyhow.
Okay.
They all his?
Carter got one.
Well, Carter got one.
If you want to approve them, I can sign them when I come back, or we can handle them next week, it doesn't matter. But either way is fine, since they're already on the agenda, we could do them.
If it's all right with you, Mr. Stecker, we will approve the request for repairs and you can sign them when you get back and take care of them and designate the contractor.
Yep, that works. And just for an update, I got a call from Jeff Didering yesterday about a washout. So we'll get paperwork made up for that, but he'd like it fixed as soon as possible, so we'll get that in the works as well. But that'll be coming for next week or the week after, whenever we can get paperwork.
And well, I'll get her fixed. Do I have a motion for the supervisors to do their repairs?
I've, I've got to explain them first.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Request repair, section two of Irvington Township. And it's need outlet pipes at flagged locations missed during dip out, from Dave Rosenmeyer.
District drainage number two at the town.
Drainage, drainage district number?
101.
105.
If you want to have fixed it.
You can think about it or you can just. Raisel's did the re, the dip out.
Okay. Did Raisel do it or you had the road department do it? Can I get back to you on it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Mr. Stecker had two repairs. And my iPad.
Do you want to read them off Roger, or do you want me to?
iPad just went off. Repair request on try 84 and repair request on drain four.
Yeah, so number, number two is on try 84 about trees needing removal from Lauren Meyer. And then number three is on drain four, lat 37 is two spots on, two spots or three on broken tile, they're flagged from Tim Earpelding.
You got any idea who you want to do them ahead of time, Kyle?
Um, the trees will probably have B&amp;W take a look at them and get them sprayed. I believe they had already been contacted about it previously, because there was a request from 2022 also. And then the one for, the request number three, I'll go look at that and get it figured out and get back to Marge.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the supervisor to take care of their drainage repair requests?
So moved.
Motion by Whacter. Second by Carter. Any more discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carried unanimous. Anything else, Marge, for drainage?
Um, not that much. Except for an email we got from Steve Minke.
Well, I actually can't.
That's it.
Yeah.
Did you forward it to the rest of us?
Yeah, I don't believe that I received that.
I didn't, I don't think.
Todd sent it to me, it was pretty much Nick.
Marge, what did you do wrong?
Everything. I believe the information he has given doesn't understand what it is and keeps asking for more of the same. We've given him what he asks.
Oh, well. Well, thank you, Marge, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Giving you a hard time.
Thank you very much, Marge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Marge.
Okay. I did forward you the emails that I got from town halls yesterday. No sense to Nick and I regarding the letter. That's the IPIB. So feel free to read that. Next week, we have the max tax levy at 8:30 in the morning. We have a joint teleconference with Winnebago County to consider approval for the updated reclassification report of WK 68-136 main open ditch and lateral two open ditch and set a public hearing. We have approval of a GPS account for board supervisors. We have approved the resolution for the max, max tax levy. And that is it so far for next week. Um, let's see, I don't think I have a lot right now. It's nice to have the budget done. I'm busy certifying city budgets that are now coming in. Usually city budgets are due March 31st, but because of the valuation thing, there's calls still have been extended to April 30th. So I'm busy certifying those and all the other budgets that are coming in, so that's all I have.
Jack, do you have anything?
Yeah, I had early childhood, North Central Iowa meeting yesterday morning. First, we had the finance committee, we went over the balance sheets, payment requests, category sheets. Reviewed the 2023 budget. Reviewed FY24 draft of funds. And talked about the request for programming. When they'll be going out, how soon they got to be back in. Reviewed literacy, literacy grant updates and tuition assistance update. Then we went into the general, general meeting, had a few new people, so we had some introductions. Finance committee gave their report from the finance meeting, approved all the budget expenditures. Had a couple of changes to a couple of policy procedures that we had to approve. Reviewed the board professional plan. And did a, doing a directory evaluation that needs to be turned back in. Approved the RFP release, the request for program release. Acknowledged the program with due notice. And administrator, she went through tuition assistance, literacy grants, the governor's allocation proposal for FY24, which could potentially get a 6.8% increase in funding. And there's some conferences, there's the prevent childhood abuse conference that she, she can attend, the drug endangered conference. She can attend early childhood night at Iowa Lakeski College. And the, um, he's involved, there are people that talk to the legislators down under the hill, which can look through some of that. And then some of the programs are reported, we're in the county public health in Mid Sioux. Next meeting is April 24th, we're advisory meeting with the programs and then the board meeting is May 22nd.
Carter?
I had a, I follow a community action organization board meeting last Tuesday evening. I had a dinner and, and meeting over at the community action building in Mason City. It was their first meeting of the year, so we're going through a lot of training and informational things for new board members. Myself along with two others who are brand new to the board, so. It's good to meet everyone over there and they, for this year, they have, they're, they're adding a dental advocate for Head Start and children. They currently use 9.7 of a $3 million grant, $3.5 million grant that they received from Head Start. And they've used $1.9 million to help low income energy assistance for families. So between the two, about five and a half million out of their $7.3 million total goes to, between Head Start and low income energy assistance. And Head Start is definitely the biggest program to do, it's their 50, 57th year of doing it. They are closing down the I Smile program. That's, that program's kind of going by the wayside with, with the children in North Iowa, just between nobody running it and, and the funding not being able for, and changing the program around, so they're doing away with that and adding other things. And this coming year, they're not sure their exact numbers, but they will be decreasing in funds due to census. The census having lowered the population that will receive less funding coming here, but. Other than that, that's, that's all I have from that meeting and my wife even came with me to that one. She may not come again. And this afternoon I have a connection meeting.
I did not have meetings in the last week, but I did talk to some people about the fair grandstands and things like that. Just kind of asking questions of where the money can come from to basically fix those up, yeah. And then I had my first set of Beaver tails.
Oh, you're getting initiated, yeah.
I think he was actually out of your district, but he contacted me, which is fine.
Well, you're going to be a Beaver tail expert.
Yeah.
Mr. Stecker, you still on?
Yep, I'm here and on Friday, the 24th, we had a meeting for Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center. All of our normal reports and stuff, but probably the thing to highlight here would be we will have proposed 20AD changes and bylaw changes coming to the full board to approve in the future. And really the only change there is in the language where it says the county should designate a representative and an alternate. We are changing it to may select an alternate because some counties currently do not do alternates. And it's kind of like the 20AD trying to force their hand and they just don't do it. So we're clarifying the language on that, but otherwise everything's staying the same. I'd say things are running pretty well in general, but there's definitely challenges with the current situation of detention in general, as I've highlighted before, but that's just a heads up, so Tammy, you'll probably get an email from them on that eventually. It might have already come as well, but that's my report.
Okay, I had a conversation with Christina Paradise, she's the one for the pipeline inspection. And they changed the contract with us on what we had suggested. It is a professional we paid within 45 days of the client receiving payment from the pipeline. It is understood that the county shall forward the invoice for professional services to the pipeline for payment in a timely manner. And that when the county receives payments for the professional services, the county will issue a payment to the professional. And that's how they changed the payment schedule, so they're giving us 45 days after we receive the money, is that?
Well, we have to approve it, we talked to her about that and she was going to make those changes. She didn't send that to me, Roger, can you forward that to me, or is she going to forward it to me?
She said she was going to forward it to you with a agenda request.
Okay, perfect, then I will just wait for that.
Okay, that's fine. And I think that's what we discussed with her when she was here. Unless somebody has something else, that's what we.
Yeah, that, that worked. That was the big thing for me, because I knew it was supposed to be a pass through and that timeframe was questionable, so that sounds good.
We didn't, we don't have any way to pay it until we get the money, so.
Yep, exactly.
So we took care of that. Anything else to come before the good of Kasoot County?
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
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 Don't have too much fun, Kyle.
I won't.